Good evening. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Licensing Board for Monday, June 18th, 2018, to order and recognize that we have 11 items on tonight's agenda. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is approval of the minutes from the regular board meeting of June 4th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded on any comments or corrections. Have we none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number two is a temporary Class B beer license for Family Promise of Washington County for Race for Carol's Place being held at Regner Park Pavilion area, October 6th, 2018, from 9:00 a.m. through 1:00 p.m.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number three is a reserve original Class B combination license for The Garden Lounge LLC, The Garden Lounge, 258 North Main Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number four is a reserve original Class B combination license for Alejandres Incorporated, Don Ramon, 501 Wildwood Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item five is an original Class B combination license for Blondie Pop Management LLC, Blondie Pop, 225 South Fifth Avenue, and for 110 Wisconsin LLC, 110 Wisconsin LLC, not surprisingly located at 110 Wisconsin Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number six is an original Class B beer license for the Fred Schaefer VFW Post, 1393, VFW Post 1393, The Horseshoe Pit, 260 Sand Drive.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item seven is a Class B combination license renewal for Brazen Head Pub LLC, Brazen Head Pub, 147 North Main Street.
Good evening. Just very briefly, I provided some information to you. This is a little unusual background. Brazen Head itself has been in business for a number of years, and in the past couple of years, we have not necessarily any problems at the establishment, but we have had some issues with the owner. Some related, or actually, all three of them related to the establishment. One was a conviction for drunken driving where he had been at the establishment, pretty much drinking on his own. Another one was a recent closing hour violation where he stayed on the premise and was drinking in excess, well beyond closing hours. He's found guilty of both those violations and then another incident in which he had been drinking at the establishment and required medical attention. We met with Mr. Fallon's last week, I'm sorry, two weeks ago. He recognized the issues and some of the problems he's putting, compromising positions he's putting his staff into. I explained to him that any further violations, we would be bringing these past violations against him and would be recommending at that time either a suspension or revocation. So at this time, Police Department is satisfied that he's got the message. He's here tonight if you have any questions. So we provide this for information. This is a close one, but I'm satisfied that he's got the information, or that he's got the message, and we'll be doing everything he can to ensure his business stays open.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions for the Chief? Mr. Fallon, is there anything you wish to add? Otherwise, no need if you don't need, if...
I think that you've covered it.
All right. Thank you. I entertain a motion on the item.
Based on Chief's recommendation, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number eight is a Class B wine-only winery renewal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number nine is a Class B combination license renewal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number 10 is approval of the operators' licenses, and there's a list in our packets.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And item number 11 is extension of premise for Museum of Wisconsin Art Incorporated for movie night at the museum to be held on June 22nd, 2017, from 8:00 p.m. through 11:00 p.m. at the Museum of Wisconsin Art, 205 Veterans Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. And just real quickly, before we adjourn, I had a voicemail from a gentleman this week who was very polite and asked two questions. Stephanie, if you could speak a little louder into your microphone? He's interested in hearing what you have to say. And then, not right now, just whenever you're speaking, in the future. And also, anyone that comes up to the mic in front, I should have mentioned it earlier, if you just make sure you're speaking loud enough. And I don't know if we can crank up the volume in back, how that technological stuff works, but I'm not sure if the gentleman's watching tonight. If he is, hopefully you can hear things a little bit better, and thanks for paying attention. There being no further business before the Licensing Board, I adjourn.
I will now call to order the Board of Public Works with four items on tonight's agenda, the first being approval of the minutes from the meeting on June 4th, 2018. Be looking for a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Second item is the approval of a grant of privilege agreement for Sylvan Meadows Condominiums at 2103 through 2134 Marie Court. Max?
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, I come to you with a proposal to approve a grant of privilege for the Sylvan Meadows condominium. The President, Chuck Wilfer, had approached her and said that they want to install PVC pipes in the right-of-way in Marie Court in order to help with drainage problems that they have on the properties along that road. This grant of privilege is pretty standard for public improvements that are proposed within public, private improvements that are proposed within public right-of-way. We have a plan showing the five pipes. Three of those will be installed this year in 2018, and then the other two are planned for next year in 2019 when they address that side of the street. So we would recommend that the Board and Council approve the agreement. You have the original attached for signature, and we will record it at the county.
All right, thanks, Max. Any questions? All right, I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right, I have a motion and second. Is there any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Third item is the approval of the Electronic Compliance Maintenance Annual Report, the ECMAR. Presentation by Steve Randall. Steve?
Thank you. Good evening. The 2017 Compliance Maintenance Annual Review consisted of 10 sections. The sewer utility received As in all the sections, giving us a 4.0 GPA. Because of that, the DNR does not require any further comment or corrective action be added to the CMAR as it was presented.
I just had two comments on that. I noticed on page 3.216, no, it'd be page 31, section 3.216, there's just a small number change, it's a difference of 68, or 48 cents between the 769,502.68, and then right below that, it says 20. I'm not sure if that was supposed to carry down, just for filing purposes, if we would, if that was correct or not.
I believe that was from rounding in the past. So the biggest thing there is to have that amount be greater and say that yes, so next year, we'll have that evened out.
Okay. All right, well, with that, I would look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion at all? All right, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Number four, the approval purchase of Power Jet. Once again, Steve.
Thank you again. Tonight, I'm seeking approval for the purchase of a new sewer jet vac truck. This vehicle is used to clean and maintain the sanitary sewer system and also respond to emergency sewer calls. We met with four vendors. Three of them could not meet specifications and therefore did not submit bids. This is consistent with past replacement of this equipment. The last three units have been vectors purchased through McQueen Equipment. So because of this, I recommend the purchase of the 2018 International Vector 2100-plus jet unit from McQueen Equipment, Inc. The cost of the unit is $358,343, less the $118,000 trade, for a total cost of the sewer utility of $240,343.
Anybody have any questions at all?
I do, yeah. Mike? Steve, I'm fairly, I think it's unfortunate that we only received the one bid for this. Is there any specifics that you can point to as to why we only got the one bid to look at for this?
Yeah, the biggest one is the length of the vehicle, where we need to park it. It's an emergency response vehicle that is full of water all the time for, if we'd get a sewer call or anything like that, so it's in a heated bay. That's the biggest reason why a lot of companies can't put a bid in, is because their vehicles are too long. So that, and along with some capacity, capacity issues, we try and get as much water as we can carry on the jet, and also the most debris for when we vacuum stuff up, to try and keep the jet running as long as we can without having any downtime to run for water or empty the jet.
So there's just not as many manufacturers of this specific vehicle that are...
Correct. It's kind of a niche vehicle, yeah, there's only so many out there, and this happens to be, and is consistent with the last three vehicles, that these are one of the, one of the only manufacturers that can meet that length spec.
And how often do you replace this vehicle?
Every five years.
Okay. And then, this has been approved with the budget already, so you're just going ahead with this purchase?
Correct. It's a 2018 capital.
Thanks.
Any other questions? All right, with that, I'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I now adjourn the Board of Public Works.
Thanks, Andrew. I'd like to call the June 18th Finance Committee to order. We have six items on the agenda. Item number one is the approval of the minutes of the meeting from June 4th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Motion and second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number two is the 2017 audit presentation being presented by Carla Gogan of Baker Tilly.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you, and good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm Carla Gogan, a partner with Baker Tilly, and I'm going to be going through the audited financial statement highlights tonight. I would welcome questions as I go. You don't need to necessarily wait until the end. We issue three deliverables, the first being the audited financial statements, and we did issue an unmodified opinion, which is referred to as a clean opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that you can receive on the audited financial statements. We also issue a communication document, which lists various items that were required to put in writing, as well as some informational items. And then the third deliverable being the report to you tonight. All the information contained within this document can be found within the audited financial statements. First, I just want to start by commending management. The condition of the records and their preparedness for the audit is outstanding. We found one, only one audit entry of any significance. I work with about 35 municipalities around the state of Wisconsin, and that is not common. So that is an indication that the information that you are receiving on a regular basis can be relied upon for its financial accuracy. So tonight, I'm going to cover a few main areas, consistent with prior years. I'm going to go through some highlights related to the general fund, which is your main operating fund of the city. I will also touch upon the debt position of the city, and then I'll finish with some comments related to the water and sewer utility. So the first is the fund balance or the equity of the general fund. We start by looking at what you plan to do, which is the budget of the general fund. Again, the general fund has your public works, public safety, general government. You would actually plan to use fund balance, or essentially use monies on hand, by about $433,000. So that's in the middle budget column. In actuality, you had positive results for the year of about $780,000. When I look at all of the expenditure categories or functional categories for the general fund, all were in a positive position, meaning they spent under what they had budgeted, and again, at a high level. The two areas that contributed most greatly to this would be public works and public safety. So then, as we walk down the page, you'll see that equity or the fund balance of the general fund is broken into the various categories. And what I do is I'll often look at how it compares to the prior year. And the two areas of note, one would be your assigned fund balance. So these are monies that you've earmarked for a particular purpose, and your carryforwards, what you carried forward into 18, were greater than what you had carried forward into 17, and that's the balance of about $765,000. The unassigned fund balance is what we really focus on, and that's your balance of seven, excuse me, $5.7 million at the end of the year. And what we do at the bottom of each page is it talks about what this means. Your unassigned fund balance is your key indicator of success, because it really is your liquidity, because these funds are not earmarked for a specific purpose. And if we look at the next page, we take a look at that unassigned fund balance. So at the top of the page, under 2017, you have about $5.7 million, and you have a policy to take a look at that number compared to the next year's operating budget. So this is taking a look at the year we're in, 2018, and you're at about 25%. And again, if you look at the bottom of the page, it talks about what does this mean? The city has a policy which says that that number, your goal, is to be between 17 and 30%. And so if you look at the graphic above, you'll see that red line is the 17%, so that's what your targeted minimum is. And then the line you'll see has been trending upwards over the last five years, and you're within your policy of within the 17 to 30%. You're at 25%. We did send you a correction to this page, and the correction was, we pulled data from our client base to show how you compare to others, and the median, the green dots, were incorrect in the first page that we had provided, so we gave you a hard copy to show for municipalities in your similar population range.
Carla, can I interrupt a second?
Of course, yes.
It's my annual Soapbox. Welcome back.
Thank you.
This is one of my favorite days, actually, especially when our numbers are trending like they are on this page, and once we get to the debt as well. But we have three new aldermen that haven't seen this information before. The graph that Carla has goes back to 2013, going back to 2011. Instead of 13%, that number was actually at 11.85%. So Moody's, the bond rating agencies, recommend that we have a minimum of 17% of our unassigned general fund balance as a percentage of budgeted expenditures. So we were significantly below that just a few years ago. We put this policy in place, I think it was probably in 2014 maybe, Carla, 2013?
Sounds right.
Your tone at that point and your coworkers was a little bit different than the tone right now, as the notes at the bottom of the page were, there may have been a few more exclamation points in there, basically saying, "Get your financial act together, guys, because you're below, not only your peers, but below what the bond rating agency recognizes as a minimum." So that's, we put that policy in place that will float between 17 and 30%, and we picked the 30%, and those are the green dots up above, that's just the median of comparable communities. That's not excellent, that's not an A+. That's kind of the middle of where communities similar to us are. So we've made tremendous progress. We've added over $3 million to our fund balance. We've more than doubled it in just five or six years. It's, I'll call it remarkable, you can call it whatever you like, but I think it's pretty impressive. But even with that work done, and this will go forward as we start talking about our budget and taking on new debt and those types of things, we've done an incredible amount of work, but we're still not even to where the middle numbers yet are of comparable communities. So we've got some work to do. I think it's a great track record and a good trend, and I think in your world, you look at trends, not necessarily one- or two-year blips on the radar, and we're certainly trending well. We just have to keep that in mind as we have deeper discussions, and I'll get on Soapbox number two in a minute, once we hit the debt page, because there's some similar conversations there. But does that make sense, guys? A little point of reference in just the last few years? Perfect, thanks.
It is very commendable, because it's a very difficult thing to do. I mean, you're very well aware of levy limit, expenditure restraint. It's difficult to build unassigned fund balance in the state of Wisconsin. So in order to do that and provide the level of service that you intend and want to provide, it is difficult. As the mayor mentioned, it is really important to look at trends. So we, we just, and we're looking at a historical view. So we just finished, or we finished a while ago, but we're reporting on the year-end of 2017. But it is important to look back to see how you are trending. That is critically important, and you have been trending in a very good direction for a number of years now, so definitely very commendable. So then, we do switch over to the, to the debt side, because, you know, we talk about, and I've done this in the past, you're kind of comparing a municipal's financial results to your own personal financial results, and we just were talking about equity. So what you have in savings, essentially, what you have available to you to spend in the future, because again, you know, one reason to have, and there are many, but one reason to have, you know, a healthy unassigned fund balance is unexpected events, and that could be significant weather events, it could be significant retirement events. I mean, there's lots of things that can happen that can negatively impact your unassigned fund balance. The other, when we look at metrics, is debt service. And here, we're taking a look at your general obligation debt outstanding. And GEO debt, as you know, is secured by your taxing authority, so all municipalities in the state of Wisconsin are limited to 5% of their equalized value. So when you're looking at debt, there's two things to keep in mind. One would be your GEO debt capacity, so that number's in the middle of the page, and that GEO debt capacity is driven by your equalized value. And you can see, again, good trend results where this is trending upwards or in a positive direction. You know, back in 2008, 2009, municipalities often lag what's happening in some of the other economics, but most, if not all, of my clients, their equalized values were going down with the recession. So, but now we're seeing those equalized values trend up. That gives you a little more flexibility in terms of your GEO debt capacity. What is under your control is your outstanding debt and the position that you have. So if you go back up to the top line of the page, or that really the third or fifth line down, you can see total GEO debt, and in 2013, you were at 74.8% or 74.8 million, which was 63% of your debt limit. And as you trend that line, you can see it went up to 75 million, and then down to 66 million, down to 61 million, and now down to 57 million. So you're at 43% of your GEO debt capacity. So you've improved that by, you know, a good percentage point. You did borrow, I believe it was about 2.5 million in 2018 for projects, but you're also slotted to pay down debt by 7.2 million in 2018. So again, a very healthy and positive trend in terms of your debt. The thing to consider is the city debt does include your TIF funds, so it is the intention that the increment generated by the TIFs are to pay for their own debt service.
Can I jump in again, Carla?
Of course.
Before you flip off this screen?
Yes.
Guys, the chart on the right, the per capita, so that's dollars of debt per person, basically, in the city of West Bend. We are the dark blue, the navy blue column. The high reference is the light blue, and then the median is the red. So the median, again, being the middle. So while we have reduced debt significantly, and I'll talk a little bit more when we get to the next screen, the friends that we're hanging out with, the light blue people, are still kind of high spenders. Our goal, and the trend is heading that direction, is to get at least a minimum down to the red area, I think, where it's about the middle of the road, about where the middle of communities are spending. We're still, on a per-person basis, we've got a significant amount of debt, but again, we're trending in the right direction.
And the next page is all about, of your annual spend. So when you look at your total governmental expenditures, what is your annual spend on debt service? And again, I equate this to, someone's going to the bank, and they're going to take out a mortgage, and the lender's going to look at, you know, of your total monthly income and your total monthly expenditures, you know, what, what can you afford? What can you afford in a mortgage? And so the, in the graphic below, you'll see the 20%, and there's the purple line. That's kind of the goal. That would be the end game, to spend about 20% of your annual, and I'm looking at it from an annual perspective, your annual spend, operating spend on debt service. And again, you've been trending in the, in the right direction here as well. This last year, you're at 24%. Again, this is, you know, 20% is a goal, and again, I think you're trending, you're trending in the right direction. We do not include capital outlay, because capital outlay and the total spend are projects, just because that can vary greatly from one year to the next, depending on the types of projects and the funding sources.
That'll be my last time here now. We're very close to what the bond ratings recommendation is, again, the purple line. When we get to that point with our fund balance, as well as debt service, I think is when we can really start laying it on pretty thick to Moody's and say, "We're looking to have our bond rating improved," which helps us in our, in the interest rates that they'll charge us, once we get to that purple number. I think it's pretty phenomenal, your information doesn't quite go back far enough, Carla, but in 2010, total city debt was a little over $83 million. We've got that down to 57 million, and as we know, we're getting close to the middle of the road on that. We've got some work to do. But dropping our debt by 31% while increasing our reserve account, some pretty heavy lifting, and that, for the new folks, that may explain some of the other challenges, road funding, you know, all of our annual budgetary challenges. It's because we're really trying to turn around this ship, of increasing our reserves to where they should be and getting debt down to a manageable level. Once those two fall into place, it's going to be a lot easier and a little more fun making some of the other decisions that we all want to do. We can go out and borrow more money right now, but Carla will be back to us next year saying, "What happened to the trend?" Now you're going in the opposite direction that you really should be.
Do we have any, do you have some kind of general projection based on the, on the history we're looking at right now, where that might happen?
Of where will happen, again, we do, and we'll be getting into that. We're planning a preliminary budget presentation at the next council meeting, which we'll talk about 2019. Even borrowing what we did for 2018, the $2.5 million, we still trend, we're still bending that curve down, bending it a little slower. I think that was the goal, at least when we approved the 2018 budget, was to continue to improve our positions, knowing that we've got some capital projects we also need to address. So, but we'll be starting those discussions right away at the July meeting.
Awesome.
Thanks, Carla. I won't interrupt anymore.
No, that's okay. Please do. We're going to shift gears now to the utilities, and we're going to focus on the water and sewer utilities. So while we're spending time on the governmental funds, the governmental funds are primarily financed with tax dollars and intergovernmental revenues. With the utilities, their primary revenue source is the charges for services that you're charging the users of the system. Gallons sold have gone down again this year. That's pretty common, you know, it's really dependent upon the weather, but also, you know, people are in a state of mind of conservation, so if they can, you know, save on their water bill, they're going to try to do that. The challenge with that is, from a utility perspective, is a number of the costs associated with running a utility are also fixed, so the usage isn't driving your costs. And you can see that the expenses did go up in 2017. This was a result of some labor costs of filling some vacancies, as well as some depreciation expense related to the utilities. to the utilities. We'll look at three metrics down below on the bottom of the page, uh, where we look at the health of a utility. Uh, the first being unrestricted cash and investments, and you have almost eight months of unrestricted cash on hand. The recommended, uh, balance here would be three months of unrestricted cash on hand, plus one year's worth of capital costs, just so that you don't find yourself in a position where you're always having to borrow for those capital items. The rate of return, the water utility is a regulated utility by the Public Service Commission, um, and they drive what you can actually earn in terms of rates on the system. And the authorized rate of return is just under 5%. Um, you're just, your actual rate of return is just over 5%. So just under was the authorized, oh, the actual is just over 5%. You can see that is down, uh, from prior years, with the exception of being 2015. And that is because the driver there is the additional expenses in 2017. And then lastly is debt coverage. So where we were talking about the general obligation debt, which is secured by the taxing authority of the city. Um, the utilities do have a portion of the geo-debt, uh, but the water utility does have some revenue bonds outstanding. So the bondholders, um, as a part of the revenue bonds, you're required to have a certain debt coverage ratio, which you are far exceeding. Um, so water rates, uh, were last increased in 2011. Um, and there is a five-year water forecast, uh, in progress to be completed in 2018, just again, to take a look at what projects are anticipated, um, and what that might mean for the water utility. Any comments on this before I move on to the sewer utility?
I have, I guess I have a question. Uh, how, how frequently, uh, do our comparative cities, uh, raise rates of the, the water, uh, as opposed to where we have? If it's been seven years at this point, um, what's the standard there?
You know, I don't know that there is so much of a standard as it is, I think, just wise to be looking at it on a regular basis and really taking a look at what future projects you have. I would say utilities are more commonly, um, a number of years ago, the Public Service Commission implemented a simplified rate case methodology. There's no cost, there's not a study involved in it, but it allows you to increase water rates, um, on an inflationary basis, just to keep up with, uh, some of those fixed costs. So I'm seeing more utilities that are getting in, into the habit of going in for a simplified rate increase on a fairly regular basis. Um, but I'd, I'd have to kind of dive into the data at the Public Service Commission to see, like, what on average, like, how often does a utility go in for a rate increase?
I guess a follow-up question. Does it fluctuate, or does it always go up like inflation?
Um, it could, you know, potentially, I suppose, it typically is going to go up, uh, just because the rates would go up because of inflationary costs. Um, you know, I'm trying to think of an instance where rates would have gone down. Um, you know, where rates, you know, I, I suppose if your customer mix were to shift or something, but usually the rates are designed to follow as well what the rate is needed for a particular class of customer, whether that be industrial, uh, residential, and so forth. So typically it's not, typically they're not coming down. And if you're going in for a rate increase, it usually means because you're seeing a trend, or you've experienced a trend of increased costs.
Carla, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I would assume that some of the three numbers that you just went through would also be showing that a rate increase may be necessary. If our number of months of unre- of, um, um, months of cash on hand, uh, starts eroding, uh, or our rate of return really starts to, to decrease, or debt service ratios, it, I think those would start to indicate that a rate increase might be needed. Or we've got a, I think, a presentation coming up in the next couple of months to talk about the five, a five-year plan of what additional investment we may, we may need. So, for example, our months of unrestricted cash is as high as it's been the last five years. Our rate of return, the average of the last five years is about 6%. So we're a hair under that. I guess that's maybe a little bit of a red flag or orange flag to take a look at. And then the same thing with debt service, coverage is pretty, seems like it's pretty off the charts. So, um, am I, I would assume that one of those numbers would be askew and would cause us to dig, you know, quite a bit deeper if we really saw a trend changing in those.
Right. I mean, these are certainly key metrics to be looking at. So I would say, you know, as of 12/31/17, did it appear that your rates were adequate at that point in time? It did. I think what the forecast or that is intending to do is look forward because it's very common, but by the time you identify that you need a rate increase, it could be a year's time before new rates are in, in effect. And what we have seen is where, um, you know, a utility will identify that a rate increase is needed because of future projects, but because of timing at the PSC or because of additional information that the PSC requests, you know, they may budget when they're doing their planning to have rates go in effect, say, January 1 of a year, but in reality, they go into place in June. So it's going to erode then the cash position that you have. So, um, it's more, I would say, again, healthy at the end of 2017. This is really, that forecast is more about looking forward and what projects are required, necessary, desirable, to identify what that might mean for your rate structure. Then moving on to the last graphic is the sewer utility. Again, often the sewer volume is going to track with water volume, and you can see the decrease in water in, uh, in the volume from 16 to 17. Um, operating revenues have stayed fairly flat. Operating expenses, uh, did go up this year, um, primarily due to, um, some higher labor costs, as well as compliance with the new phosphorus limits, uh, in 2017. So that was a, a driver in the expenses. Um, the sewer utility, so when we look at the metrics below, and where we looked at the three metrics before, really here, the metric is your unrestricted cash. Uh, the sewer utility is an unregulated utility, so you have the authority to raise rates. You do not need to go to the Public Service Commission, uh, for approval in raising rates. And also, the sewer utility does not have any revenue debt outstanding, whereas, so we were looking at that debt coverage ratio for water because it has revenue bonds. Uh, that is not the case for the sewer utility. Um, so again, if you were to look at the months of unrestricted cash, um, you know, certainly at the end of 17, you know, you were in a healthy unrestricted cash position. Uh, the DNR does require you to review rates for adequacy every two years, and a rate review is, my understanding is in place for 2018. So again, phosphorus is, is certainly key for our, our clients, and, and that's the thing kind of to watch in terms of how that may impact, uh, sewer utility rates along with just general operating costs.
One comment, Carla, on the graph. Um, it just looks to me like, and maybe my eyes are off, but, uh, it looks like the red line...
I see what you're seeing. It looks like the red line is...
Yeah, it looks like it's up over $4 million, and paints a picture that's a little uglier than it might really be. I'm sort of a...
Right. And I may be looking at the, the other access, and it doesn't, it, it's not producing a correct graphic. So we will...
I can see that, yeah, revenues are, are a little bit less than expenses, but it's not up above $4 million. So if you wouldn't mind updating that, that'd be cool.
We will. Yes.
Good. Thank you. I'm sure the numbers are right. The graph just might be a little off.
Right. I think the graph is rock. So we will definitely...
Audit the editor.
...refine. I know. Thank you. We need to be audited sometimes, too. So...
Carla, can you speak to the, um, the operating expenses on this graph as well? This is a, some fixed costs that, um, don't necessarily adjust with the volume build. Is that correct? Is that why that's up there, higher than the revenue?
And, and that would be correct. I mean, there's just some costs associated with, um, and again, the phosphorus, uh, costs were included in 2017, and that's, that's the biggest driver here. Any other questions that I could address tonight? Well, certainly appreciate your time. Again, um, positive results. I don't think any surprises tonight, and that's something we strive for as well. I want to thank you for the opportunity to work with you, and again, management, um, you know, as you were talking about, and, and in the future, going to bond raters, you know, one thing they do look at is, um, management and management policies. So to the extent you have fund balance policies and other policies that management can look to in order to manage the operation, I certainly looked at as very favorably, um, by, by bond raters.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Carla. Any other questions for Carla?
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, I think, as elected officials, we'll, we'll definitely take all the credit we can get for all of this, but I think a lot of it has to go to, uh, you know, Jay and Carrie and her team, as well as the department heads. Um, they've done a, a really good job of, of, you know, helping us get where we are, um, knowing that we had some, some issues that we had to work through. And as we continue to get to that, to that, to that sweet spot, you know, I think, uh, a thank you to everybody out there for, for working hard to get there. Anything else on this one? All right. We'll move to item number three. Decision regarding a claim against the city by Statewide Services, Inc., Andrew Bargenquist.
Just wanted to introduce this since we have some new...
Absolutely.
Um, so, um, these are, you'll see a lot of these pop up. Um, I just wanted to introduce it since we have some new people here. What happens, uh, is somebody, uh, submits a claim to the city that says, "I hit a pothole. I had, you know, whatever, uh, happened due to, uh, due to something, uh, that has to do with the city." They submit the claim to this, to, uh, the clerk's office or administration. That thing gets submitted to our insurance company. Uh, when that gets submitted to the insurance company, they do an investigation, uh, into the circumstances surrounding it, whether the city knew about the claim or the, the, the issue or not prior to the accident happening, uh, et cetera. Um, they look at everything, and then they make a recommendation, uh, to council as far as the denial or acceptance of the claim. Um, once the claim is denied, we issue a, a notice that we've denied the claim. Uh, the homeowner can then take that, uh, or the homeowner, car owner, whatever, can take that to their insurance company and submit the claim through their own insurance company. Um, uh, but you'll see, if you read through them, they recommend and they give you the basis for why they're recommending denial of the claim. Um, so, if there's any questions...
Motion to deny.
So...
Anything else?
No.
Okay.
If anybody has any questions, I can answer them, but thank you. Just wanted to introduce it.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to deny the, the claim for Andrew Bargenquist. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. Item number four, decision regarding a claim against the city by Statewide Services for Jane Towler. Again, this is the same...
Motion to deny also. Second.
A motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. And then item number five, decision regarding a claim against the city by Statewide Services, Inc., for Jeff Zeiss and Leanne Cosmo.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, by the same sign. That motion carries. At this time, I'd like to recess the Finance Committee to Common Council.
Thank you, Rich. I'd like to call the City of West Bend Common Council for Monday, June 18th, 2018, to order and recognize that we have 25 items on tonight's agenda. Uh, Alderman Jenkins is absent and excused. Item number one is a proclamation declaring July 2018 as Park and Recreation Month. And it reads, "Whereas parks and recreation activities enhance the physical and mental health of individuals, workforces, and communities." And whereas, my computer just blanked out, a bunch of other neat stuff. Anybody, do you have it in hard copy by chance?
Ah, perfect.
And whereas, parks and recreation opportunities and open space enhance the desirability of communities as locations for business, industry, and residential housing. And whereas, parks and open space are vital to the appearance and livability of communities, protect our air and water, and balance our ecosystem. And whereas, it is the right of everyone, regardless of age, race, color, religion, gender, national origin, or ability to participate in parks and recreation programs and activities, and enjoy parks and open space. And whereas, parks and recreation stimulates tourism revenues and the economic development of communities. Now therefore, I, Craig K. Sedonico, Mayor in the City of West Bend, will hereby proclaim July 2018 as Park and Recreation Month in the City of West Bend, and I encourage all citizens of West Bend to, to participate in the many great special events and programs in our parks in the month of July and throughout the entire year, thanks to our Park and Rec staff for all that they do for all of us. Item number two is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of the Common Council of June 4th, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Are there any questions, comments, or corrections?
Harry None. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Items three through 14 are the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions or comments? Harry None. All
those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 15 is a resolution approving the compliance maintenance annual report of the City of West Bend Sewer Utility.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 16 is a decision regarding a claim against the city by Statewide Services Incorporated, Andrew Bargenquist.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Item 17 is a decision regarding a claim against the city by Statewide Services Incorporated, Jane Towler.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number 18 is a decision regarding a claim against the city by Statewide Services, Jeff Zeiss and Leanne Cosmo.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number 19 is a resolution amending the traffic manual for the City of West Bend, and we have a presentation tonight by Chief of Police, Ken Moeller. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening again. Um, these recommendations are coming, uh, from the Safety Commission after May 22nd meeting. Um, residents of Creekside subdivision, uh, requested some traffic control signals in their subdivision. Um, after a very lengthy discussion, uh, the commission recommended, and we're asking you to approve, the placement of two stop signs, one on Pintail Drive at Edgewater Drive and one on Whitewater Drive at Reed Drive. Um, I guess I'll address any questions, if there's anything regarding those recommendations, before I go into any other questions or go into other detail.
This was a pretty lengthy discussion, I believe. Alderman, Cassin, you've been involved in some stuff, anything that...
Correct. So the, yeah, residents of, of that Creekside subdivision have been looking for a stop sign at, um, Pintail and Edgewater, um, to help control some speeding that's going through there. Um, we had a lengthy discussion, um, with regards to the uniform traffic manual, um, in terms of what, basically, it defines where a stop sign is necessary and those types of, of things. The, uh, actually, the, based off of the, the city engineer, it was thought that a yield sign, um, Safety Commission, um, didn't think that a yield sign would do much there. Um, the only thing that I would recommend or suggest is that we flip that, that stop sign and put it at Ed- uh, Pintail Drive instead of Edgewater to control northbound and southbound traffic versus Edgewater eastbound and westbound. Um, I know the chief and I have talked, and the city engineer, Max and I have talked, um, stop signs aren't really set up for or, aren't used for, for traffic control. Um, I'm sorry, for speed control. Um, however, I think in this instance, that stretch of road, being a little bit longer, uh, has been started to be used as more of a shortcut through there. And I think speeds just tend to go up on this long stretch, longer stretch without any stop signs there. So that was what I was going to propose.
And if I can just respond, uh, we listened that night to the, I guess, issues or concerns with speed. Um, since that meeting, we actually have set up almost 80 hours of radar time on a number of instances. Um, and in that amount of time, we've issued two speeding tickets. Those were for going eight miles over the limit. Um, I really do not think there's a, a speeding issue in that area. Um, I also went back over four and a half years of history in that area of any crashes. That entire subdivision has had two crashes. None of them related to intersections or speed. They were both people backing up out of their driveways. Um, so I, I find some of the, and I understand people's concern, you know, and they think they're speeding going through an area, but, uh, we haven't seen that. There's not evidence of it. And, and I think that the recommendations made originally by Max to bring yield sign, and I was the biggest objector to that. And my feeling is if it's an uncontrolled intersection, every uncontrolled intersection, you have to yield that. To put a yield sign there, from an enforcement standpoint, means nothing. So that's why I just said a yield sign doesn't accomplish anything. And if we feel that the, the intersection needs to be controlled, that the stop sign made more sense, and it makes more sense to put it on the street that actually has less traffic, because it doesn't slow down speed. Um, that's not recommended by the engineers and by the traffic experts, and the evidence that they're speeding in the area isn't there. So I would recommend that the council adopt the recommendations from the Safety Commission.
So move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. I, I was, did have a, was, um...
Motion's been made and seconded, I was, did have a, was, reached out to, to ask, this isn't a public hearing, but since it's a pretty self-contained neighborhood, is there anyone from the community that is interested in saying something? Couple guys, feel free to step up to the mic and just let us know your name and address, and let us know what's on your mind, you heard the recommendations, you heard the motion, but again, it was a pretty self-contained neighborhood, wouldn't mind hearing what's on your mind.
Yeah, Mark Blough, good evening, address 1718 Edgewater Drive. I think just a couple of questions maybe to bring up for discussion. One is related to the monitoring that did go on, what time period or time durations that did occur. And then I think, secondly, I know speeding is one of the pieces that obviously has been brought forward by the neighborhood and concern. I would say, there probably hasn't been a lot of, I would say, activity, right, within that neighborhood, because we're a growing neighborhood, and I think one of the things that is coming to mind here is that with a growing neighborhood, it's also a younger neighborhood, and we have a lot of first-time drivers, so in addition to the speeding concern, one of the concerns is also in terms of, it's an uncontrolled, you know, intersection with maybe a lot of first-time drivers or new drivers. So although I respect and understand where you would want to, from a flow of traffic standpoint, stop the shorter intersection, I think in terms of the amount of traffic that's going through Edgewater, the neighborhood would prefer to actually have the traffic that's coming through actually stopped, so that if there is other cars that are going or other children or families that are crossing, that those would be essentially safer in their best interests, so.
Thanks for stepping forward. Good evening.
Brian Stelfel, 1723 Pin Tail Drive. I live one, two houses off the corner there, and I observe every day cars coming around Edgewater. Edgewater is considered the entrance and exit out of the neighborhood, therefore cars that are in a hurry to get out of the neighborhood or into the neighborhood, that is a road that they speed on, most likely, and that the stop signs should be stopping the traffic through Edgewater that are going north and south, just to slow that down. I observe many times that cars come to the intersection at the same time, they have no idea what to do, they kind of look at each other, so some kind of control there I think is definitely needed. And as far as the police officers sitting there, it's great that they are, you can see them from quite a distance away, so I feel like people saw them, didn't do their normal thing, so I don't know if that is true facts or not. My kids are crossing the intersection daily on their bikes, and I feel that there should be stop signs north to south on Edgewater, stopping that traffic. I would think that it would slow them down at least, and if they don't slow down for a stop sign, I think that's a bigger problem, so, that's it.
One follow-up question, guys, and again, I know this isn't necessarily scientific, but is the traffic, in your opinions, is it within your neighborhood, or is it someone trying to shortcut the corner of Decorah and River Road, or...
I would say it's mostly neighborhood traffic, and it's...
I think, I think there's neighborhood traffic definitely that's going on, but I think with it being a growing neighborhood, there's a lot more contractors that are being brought, excuse me, into the area, and traveling back and forth between not only Edgewater into the new subdivision, but then therefore back and forth. So I think, again, with this is, we're trying to take proactive steps in terms of not only address an issue that I think many of the residents have seen and are concerned, in terms of the risk, the probability of risk and the potential impact, but I think we're also looking for, in terms of having that preventive measure in place, would also help mitigate any type of risk with the growing neighborhood and what is happening within the neighborhood as well.
And the reason I ask that is, and I think the council would agree, we've, our Safety Commission, some pretty knowledgeable folks are on there, no one has an axe to grind, no one is anti-stop sign, and no one is pro-stop sign, they make decisions and recommendations, you know, just based on their professional experience, but knowing that your neighborhood is relatively self-contained, and again, in your opinion, it's mostly traffic contained within your neighborhood that's causing it, maybe this is where you're going, Rich, that since it is a, for the most part, you're not affecting traffic from outside the neighborhood, really doesn't matter to me if these people want to have another stop sign up in another spot around their neighborhood. Again, I know a motion's been made and seconded already, but I just wanted the gentleman to come forward and get that out, that it seems as though it's sort of policing their own neighborhood, to me.
Right, it's unanimous among the neighbors that I've talked to, and it's been 10-plus neighbors that it should be stopped from Edgewater, north and south.
Again, I'm not trying to discount anything that our Public Safety Commission folks do, and they're a knowledgeable bunch, and they certainly didn't have any kind of bias one way or another toward your neighborhood, but any other questions or comments anybody has? Mike?
Is there, oh, I'm sorry. Maybe the chief could speak to this a little bit more, but, or anybody, and maybe I'm putting him on the spot, but how many uncontrolled intersections do we have in the city, and are they in general a nuisance or an issue?
I don't know the number, but the vast majority of intersections are uncontrolled, that's my point, and when you get to an uncontrolled intersection, you have to yield, everybody has to yield. And I'm not an expert on the uniform traffic safety manual, but most times they say that stop signs are unwarranted, in fact, they cause more accidents, and that they particularly cause more accidents on the thoroughfares, because people are, and when they see, when they get there, and they realize that all they had to do was yield versus stop, Ken Pest brings this up all the time on the Safety Commission, he's got far more experience than I do, that especially the regulars start to disregard those signs, and they become more dangerous, or that there, we see more rear-end accidents at those intersections. So that is why they recommend not putting them on the thoroughfares. And I, I think that the Safety Commission listened and made a very reasonable recommendation, and I still think it's the most reasonable recommendation.
Justice, do you have a follow-up?
No.
Anybody else? So, so I understand, the motion's been made and seconded to go with the Safety Commission's recommendation of a stop sign on the east-west road, not the north-south road, do I have that right, Rich? Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I think the Whitewater Drive at Reed Drive, there's, there weren't any issues or concerns with that one.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries, thanks for coming forward, gentlemen. Item number 20 is an ordinance for a change of land use for lands located at the northeast corner of East Water Street and Wisconsin Street, and lands located west, north, and south of South Forest Avenue from industrial, commercial, and multifamily residential land use to mixed land use by the City of West Bend Department of Development, and Business and Development Planner, James Ranky, is here to tell us all about it. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight's proposal is for a land use change in our comprehensive plan. We took a look at the development patterns in the Tiff 5 and Tiff 12 areas, which is the old Gale Company and the area west over where Moe is. We had a section of land that we also have a proposal for, for rezoning. In order for us to rezone that property from the industrial to the mixed-use district, we had to change our comprehensive plan. So as a part of the comprehensive plan change, we also incorporated all the other lands that are already zoned mixed-use, and this is just more of a cleanup also to bring our land use and our zoning in compliance to match each other for the mixed-use area. And this is all to help facilitate the redevelopment in Tiff 5 and 12.
Thanks, Jim, any questions for Jim?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item 21 is rezone two parcels located at the northeast corner of Wisconsin Street and East Water Street, tax key, tax keys 1119.132.0026 and 1119.132.0192, from M2 Heavy Industrial District to MXD Mixed Use District. Assuming these items are all related, right?
Yeah, again, this is, this is just a, this is actually a rezoning request, the property is actually zoned M2, this is the old industrial use from when the Gale Company used it, we're requesting the change to mixed-use district for a office use development that's being proposed up in that area. So this is just a request to clean up that corner for that acre and a half, to facilitate that redevelopment.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Item number 22 is a request to hold a special licensing board and special common council meeting to consider the Class A combination liquor license application from Riser Fuels, LLC. It's my understanding, these folks are buying some convenience stores in West Bend, and with all that they had going on with their closing, they missed a deadline to submit their liquor license application. If they wait, the next council meeting is July 9, I think it is, and they would really like to be selling beer and other stuff over the 4th of July holiday. We already have a special plant commission meeting on the 26th. I'm open to holding the special meetings, as long as we can get a quorum on the evening of the 26th, a couple of quick items. And if so, is plant commission, is it at 6? 6 o'clock, I think it is? Sorry, that's a 15-minute meeting at the most, I would think, probably not even that long? Yeah, so we could probably have council meeting at 6:15, if that works for at least five of you guys? Stephanie, can you communicate that? June 26, 6:15? Perfect. Item number 23, report by Alderman Christian regarding the downtown bid board meeting. Mike?
Good evening, everybody. Bid board met on Tuesday, June 5. Topic of discussion, for the most part, included conversation regarding the bike racks that have been placed around town, and especially in the downtown. Some businesses have been requesting that bike racks be placed in front of their businesses in particular, so we've been considering ways to do that. We do have to order new bike racks, if that's going to be the case, and we're going to continue to place them throughout the downtown area, so that's one thing we are looking to keep up on. One of the problems with the current bike racks, the way that they're installed with the pavers that we have in the downtown area, they do become loose, and the brick pavers become loose, so we've been trying to figure out a way to possibly put some pads, concrete pads down in those locations, and then work with the businesses to make that happen, so they will be more secure and more sturdy, and you may see more of them popping up around the downtown. I know the Bike Friendly Group has been very vigilant in working with the businesses, and Adam Gitter and Jay Shambow, to get those bike racks placed around the downtown area, so that's a positive sign for them. Another topic of conversation was the garbage receptacles and just the general litter, in particular cigarette butts, that are occurring in the downtown area. We just wanted to remind, and we are sending a letter out to the downtown businesses, reminding them that they are responsible for the cleanup of the direct area right in front of their businesses, much like snow removal, they're also responsible for the cleaning up of litter in their area, and that includes cigarette butts. Along with that conversation, we did talk about addressing the potential for additional recycle bins and just general trash receptacle appearance, and just locations of trash receptacles and possibly recyclable containers in the downtown area as well, and we think that will help to improve the appearance and the awareness of putting your trash in the right place rather than on the street, so. Roots and Branches gave a nice report regarding hanging baskets and flowers. They always do such a really nice job of decorating and making the downtown area look really, really nice, and so we commended them on their efforts. And one of the final items of discussion was the potential for placing a, possibly a Christmas tree in the downtown area. This year, we're working with possibly Roots and Branches to purchase a large tree, and we are considering the option of placing a tree in the area, a holiday tree, to highlight the season, so that's something that might be coming down the pipeline as well.
Thanks, Mike, any questions for Mike? Item 24, both Alderman Jenkins and Caston were excused from the plant commission meeting, but I was there. We talked about a, and approved a small parking lot near South Main and Chestnut, that'll help support a new hairstylist. We addressed the downtown rezoning items that we just took action on a couple of minutes ago, and then we reviewed and approved a great addition to Bob's Auto on Decorah Avenue, so congrats to Bob's Auto, and thanks for them choosing to continue to do business in West Bend and expand here. Any questions for me? Item 25 is a report by Alderman Caston regarding the Long Range Transportation Planning Committee meeting.
So we've met a couple times since the referendum, and had a, had good discussions at both of them. At our last meeting, Max was able to bring some data that was very important in terms of road conditions and road priorities. The short answer is that coming up at the June 9, or July 9 meeting, we'll come forward with a recommendation from the Long Range Transportation Committee with regards to what we've kind of come up with as a consensus for moving forward, and, you know, give it to the council for their discussion and their ideas on how to move forward.
Thanks, Rich, any questions for Rich? And be no further business before the common council adjourn.
Thanks, Craig, I'd like to reconvene the Finance Committee for item number six, entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to state statute section 19.85, section 1, sub E, deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session with regards to letters of intent.
So, move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Stephanie, you want to take a roll call vote?
Alderman Butchlick.
Aye.
Alderman Christian.
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier.
Aye.
Alderman Caston.
Aye.
Alderman Hugaster.
Aye.
Alderman Model.
Aye.
Alderman Kist.
Aye.
We're in closed session.
We will not be coming back, so we will be going right out of closed session and adjourning from there, so, thank you very much, everybody.